All right, if I could, I'd like to call the September 12th meeting of the White County School Board to order. This is our work session that we have monthly hold before our regular scheduled meetings. So it's time for board members for us to go over, review the agenda, any items there that we need to discuss, policy or things of that nature that we don't need to put on a, consider agenda item for our main, main meeting. We'll, we'll cover those here. For our new board members, and we have, we have several. Hey, Ms. McGill. We have several and I'd like to say welcome, Ms. Douglas, Mr. Smith, Ms. Officer, Ms. Sackett, and then Ms. McGill, you were here our last meeting, so this isn't your first, this is your second. So thank you for coming back. So glad y'all are here. So what we're gonna do is if you have access to your electronic packet and you have that pulled up, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through the consent agenda items. And so if you have observed any of our meetings in the past, cons, items that are in consent agenda mean that they would have passed with unanimous approval, meaning there would, no board member would be, have questioned about whether or not they should be discussed. If there's any discussion items in there that you would like to be for us to discuss in, in our regular meeting, we will certainly pull that out and make that an agenda item when we get into our regular meeting. But these are things that we will, we will review. And if the, if the board is in agreements, then, agreeance, then we will consider those consent items and then we will move on. It just allows us for a little bit more efficient, regular meeting. The items in consent agenda like our regular meeting, excuse me, items that we discuss here in committee like our regular meeting are recorded and they'll be, they'll be retained for, for references if needed. So as you look at your, your agenda for tonight, items in consent agenda would be approval of our minutes from, that were held on our August 8th meeting. We have budget amendments and transfers that I'm gonna ask Mr. Drumbarger to speak to. We have some policy reports. We have considered a couple of holidays as extending the, those as paid vacation, adding President's Day to vacation days. And so we have, have some discussion on that. We'll take care of that during this time. We have, have a testing policy that, that needs to be amended as well as an update for policy 403, 4600. And then we have, will be given, speaking to the board member assignments for review of Section 2 policies. Then we'll touch on the maintenance report, our school report, budget report, and we have some district salaries scales that we need to, we need to review and, and consider for approval. There'll be T L N report, also be a monthly threat assessment report, personnel report. We have a couple of, we have a fundraiser request, we have requests for out-of-state travel, and then some surplus items that have been designated for, for us to approve to allow those to be sold. Then there's one more update on staff pay scale. So those are consent items, and so we'll use this time to, to go through those and, and have some discussion on those. And if there's any questions, a lot of the reports, obviously, if there was any item of, that we would need to take action on, that would find itself filtering up to our regular meeting. So we'll get into our, our review. So the, there was included in your packet was the committee meeting minutes that was held last month in, in, at Bondicraw. Pause if there's any, any questions or anything that regarding those minutes that need to be, we need to discuss.
Hey, I was just noticing in those meetings, and thank you for allowing me to be on the phone for this meeting, but it said Ms. Fowler was on the phone, on the phone at one of those meetings. Was that true, or should that, should that have been myself on the phone in attendance to one of those meetings?
You, you would be correct, Mr. McDonald. We, in our minute, minute meeting, minute, meeting minutes, the reg, for our regular meeting, it was, said that Mrs. Fowler was on the phone, but that was actually you, was it not?
That's correct.
I, I was there for the six o'clock meeting, I just was not there for the workshop that we already, that we have at five.
All right, so, so just for clarity, we'll-
Just for the record, that's clarity on, on the record.
Okay, so Ms. Sims, if you wouldn't mind going back and looking at the regular meetings and-
Because Ms. Fowler, you were sitting to my left, as I recall.
Correct.
It was a meeting before that she was on the phone.
That's, that's, that's correct.
Coming back.
That's correct, yes. And you were a little too far to the left to keep me on track.
No way. It's Mr. D's job to-
We'll, we'll assign that to Mr. D. Okay. So anything on the, on the, our committee meeting minutes? Okay. Then we made the, the note on the, our regular board meeting minutes. Other than that correction, was there anything else that there was, any questions on the way that was recorded? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the budget amendments. And I'm gonna let Mr. D walk, walk through these budget amendments, walk us through those, and that way we'll know what, what monies are needing to be, needed to be transferred from one account to another.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go in order as they are in your packet, board members, and then I'll, and I'll go quickly. If you have any questions, please stop me and I'll be glad to answer them, but I'll try to be as quick as I can, as there are several tonight. The first is Fund 142 Federal Programs, Subfund 432. This is our 21st Century After School Program Cohort. This is not the one that we used money, or we shuffled money for, for, that wasn't gonna be funded this year. This is the other three schools, Castle Doyle and Northfield. So it's a, that we're, this money comes in and, and we are expending it in the amount of 193, 587, 50. So this is the one that's still funded federally. Next is the transfer of funds, where we transferred that fund, that building fund balance, that is outstanding balance of $372,460.83, moving that into the general fund balance. And then you'll see momentarily that a, a big portion of that was used to fund the other 21st Century grant, and the remaining funds will stay in fund balance. Next is, again, yeah, we talked about that closed-out capital funds project, excuse me. The next one is Fund 141. This is an amount of $3,231.39, budget carryover items to upgrade software and security. This is money left over from our security grant from last year, and we had a little bit of extra money to put towards a few other security upgrades, a few more locks and cameras to, to finish out that, that program's funding. Next, 141, this is a state special education preschool grant. This is our, again, our state preschool grant from the state. This is an amount of $141,508.80. You can see how that money is dispersed amongst personnel, benefits, materials and supplies, and equipment. Let me go back, because I think I've, she's got these, of course, I skipped several because they are underneath. Okay, I apologize. I'm going back to the very first one in your packet, and I'll scroll down. I apologize, they're in here different than they are in my physical packet. Going back to the first one, which was the Educational Capital Projects Fund 171. Just beneath that is General Purpose Fund 141, an amount of $372,461. This again is to recognize the Educational Capital Projects Funds closeout and to allow money to be used then for the 21st Century Programs at Bondicraw, Finley, Witham Park, and the middle school for this year. So that's showing that money being transferred in. Scrolling down from there, Fund 142, Subfund 102. We see an amount of $80,435.56. This is budget carryover for, to approve, upon state-approved allocations for fiscal year '25. So this is a Title II carryover money, and it's going towards instructional coaches, some teachers' salaries, coaches' salaries, educational assistance, and benefits. So where we are right now, this is the time of year that we just find out what all of our federal money is. It's just rolling in, we're finding, they're finally, those budgets are being realized. Where you're actually, we put money in placeholders and, and back in April and say this is what we think we're gonna get. So this is all that federal money and all these grants that are actually coming in at this time. And we're finding out the carryovers, what was left from last year coming in. So that's really mainly what we're dealing with, and that's why there's so many tonight. Scrolling down, Subfund, excuse me, Fund 142, Subfund 171, this is ATSI 22 grant. This is money allocated for the middle school budget carryover money from last year. It's gonna help pay for an instructional coach and funds for the NIET program, the consulting program, person that we use at the middle school to help work on some subpar scores at that school. That's an amount of $25,995.15. Scrolling down further, Fund 142, Subfund 172, this is the ATSI Grant 23. This is for the middle school, an amount of $75,000. That's gonna go towards instructional coaches, also benefits for that position. And, yeah, I think we utilize all that for the coaches that'll be working with those teachers to free up money in our own budget as they work on some of the scores at that particular school. ATSI is Additional Targeted Support and Intervention, if you're wondering. Lots of acronyms. Just beneath that, our next one is Fund 142, Subfund 201. This is Title II Part A. This is transferring money from Title II to Title I to amend previous budgets. And this is an amount of $40,555. And it's, we have money in there for professional development, instructional coaches, and their benefits. Scrolling down, 142, Subfund 411. We have an amount of $5,781.69. This is budget carryover from last year. It's being brought over, it's gonna be used for, it was actually in safe and drug-free schools. Again, some for instructional coaches, benefits, travel, and staff development. Next is more carryover money in Subfund 501. We have $1,674.31 left over. That'll come over and help with medical insurance for some of those staff members and for in-service professional development. All right, one, sub, excuse me, Fund 142, Subfund 718, this is state special education preschool grant. It's our preschool, special education preschool money. As it comes in, it's this $141,508.80. And you can see how it's broken down amongst the educational assistance in those classes, their benefits, material supplies, and special education equipment that is needed for the preschool sped class.
Hey, Mr. Dean?
Yes.
I interrupted right there. How many of those special ed pre-K, uh, pre-K classes do we currently have?
Three.
Three.
Two at Finley, or two at Witham Park, one at Finley?
Three at Witham Park.
They're all at Witham Park. We do have a special needs class at Finley, but it's not the special ed pre-K.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Next is Subfund 897, Access for All Learning Network Grant, $15,000, and has broken up amongst instructional materials and supplies, and other special ed materials and supplies. This is to meet the needs of special ed students in the, in the general ed classrooms. Scrolling down further, Subfund 901, IDEA Part B. This is a budget to additional allocations plus some carryover funds from fiscal year '24. Total amount is $259,357.55. That money goes into the accounts to pay for some special ed teachers, also assistance, benefits, testing, special ed equipment, travel, equipment, transportation equipment, and staff development, number of different items in the sped department. Subfund 912, IDEA preschool, it's an amount of $7,929.28. This is additional money, it's, and carryover from last year. It'll be used for medical insurance, instructional materials, and other supplies and materials for the sped program. Subfund 934, this is ESER III money. This, they, this is money that's been awarded from, remaining from other systems, so not all systems spent all their ESER money as wisely as we did. And so they had some left over, and the state allocated that, allowed us to apply for more funds. So we received $92,452.19 more. And that is going to pay for a lot of the new software that we're using for benchmark testing and for diagnostics for our students, so.
So that's new money, right?
That is new money, yes.
That we did not calculate.
Always good.
Correct. We budgeted that money in our GP budget for that software, and this was money that came in after the fact that we were able to put towards that. So it was a nice, nice little surprise.
Again, thanks to those that are writing the grants.
Yes, Ms. Felton is, is a huge part of that, yes. Last in this line of budget amendments is Subfund 951, Out-of-School Time Career Pathways Grant. That's a $75,000 grant for a CTE department used for training and equipment to further program. There are some salaries, small amount for salary and wages, but mostly for materials and supplies and vocational instruction of equipment.
I believe so.
Did we?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm laughing.
Yeah, we did. Fourteen pages worth, so.
That's right.
They, and appreciate you going, going through that. So just as a reminder to us all, this time of year, and I really appreciate, you know, the work that, that-
Yeah, there are, I think I actually have. There, I think there are a few more, Ms. Alley. There's three more.
That's on, that, I'm sorry, that's on, that's on the next page.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, there are a few more. I think we had, we had some money left over, carryover funds for, I don't know if we addressed this one or not, but I'll do it again if we, just in case. I've sub, this is a school from 141, had some carryover money from the public safety grant that'll carry over to use for upgrades on software for our security cameras, an amount of $3,231.39. I don't think we addressed, this one is Subfund 702, ARP Homeless. Received $11,383.69 there, and that will go towards purchasing of a deep freezer, washer and dryer, food and clothing, hygiene supplies for the homeless in our community. That's seen through the FRC under the direction of Beverly Drumbarger. And last in this line is a budget amendment from 142, from Subfund 938, the Math Implementation Support Grant. We had some carryover money from last year in the amount of $3,250, and we're gonna use that to purchase some more in-service professional development through NIET, our math curriculum support team. And that, I think, is the end of the budget amendments.
I believe you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna pause here just, just for a moment and everybody a chance just to review those budget amendments one more time. Look through your packet to make sure we, we covered them all, and though we did, the file that has 14 pages worth of amendments. You covered the, the one that had three. Did we cover, did we cover the Fund 141 sped?
Yes.
Was that it? That was in the, that was a duplication?
Yes, Ms. Alley gave me another, and that's a duplication.
So when you look in your packet, there's one additional file in there that, the 06B sped preschool grant budget amendment, that, we did cover that back in the initial list of grants that we looked at. Let me see if I can direct you to that. That was, the file with, with 14, I think that's page nine, so we, we have covered that. So don't think that that's a, an additional budget amendment, that was just a duplicate. Any comments, questions on the budget amendments? So this time of year, and as I was gonna say, appreciate Ms. Alley because, and, and all those that helped with getting these monies appropriated and right accounts, obviously from accounting perspective, you, monies in one account, and then it, in a lump sum, and then it has to be broken down into the individual categories which it would, it would be spent. So, so a large number, you've got to be very specific about what that large number consists of, and it consists of a lot of other, other subcategories, and so that's what we're looking at here. And usually in time when you see, for example, we may have, in some of the, the funding that we get, it's reimbursement from the state. So where we have to cash flow our expenses, and then we get reimbursed from the state. So you see a lot of times when, when these items come up in our meetings that we will be just taking the money we receive from the state and paying us, paying us back. You'll see some, some transactions like that take place. But what this does is gets us in position that we can cover the expenses that we have budgeted for in those, those areas. So any other questions on, on our budget amendments?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
On the, the unassigned fund balance, the 138, 681, will that eventually move to permanent fund balance? Or is it kind of already there?
Mr. Markham, you want to speak to that?
That, that will move that into the permanent balance.
Okay.
And you're talking about the monies that we closed from our capital account.
That's correct.
Yes.
The part, portion that wasn't used.
That wasn't allocated, correct.
Allocated, thank you.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I just wanna echo what you said, and, and the, the monies that are in and out and all the funds and the subfunds, Ms. Alley, Mr. Markham, and their whole crew that, that has anything to do with that is top-notch, and I think that's why when we see the audit come through, that there's never really a question about our monies being off, because I'll trust you, Ms. Alley's going to know wherever Penny's at, and I appreciate her for that. We're, we're gonna have a hard time finding somebody else to do it as well as she does, if, if and when she ever decides to retire. So kudos to her and, and all the work that she does.
She, she certainly has set the, the bar high, and appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. McDonald. Dividends and credits are not my strong suit, so I appreciate and got a lot of respect for people that can navigate through that. Okay, anything else on, on, on the budget amendments? All right, so next, we're gonna go into, let's see. All right, so going into policy, and the reason this is in policy is because Policy 5310 states that, that outlines the, the policies that we as a district have as designated as, as, as paid, or paid vaca- it says vacation days, paid holidays. So we have a list there, and it's been brought, and we've been considering adding President's Day to that, to that vacation day. And it, and it, it more impacts support staff and such as assistant secretaries, nurses, drivers, bus drivers, consult, custodians, maintenance and mechanics. So it, it's, it's non-licensed personnel that we are considering this, this, this change to, and this addition. This is brought up in the, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, that in order, before we just say, yes, we'll adopt that, we need to know the financial impact of that to our budget. And it's estimated total, if I read this correctly, $25,934.57. And that would, that would, so that would be the cost as it stands now, given the pay scales of how that would impact our, our budget. So we understand the cost, and so if we want to amend that policy by adding the President's Day as vac, as vacation day, then that's the information that was requested. So I'll pause here and see what, what comments board we want, we want to have on, on that regarding a potential policy change.
I would like to ask Mr. Markham something. So I know we haven't made it to this part yet for the monies we're actually showing, but right now we're still showing negative 2 million something in the hole, correct? but right now we're still showing negative two million something in the hole, correct?
From a budgetary standpoint, but if you recall, with our GM financial statement, we ended with about two million to the positive for our budget from last year.
Right, but that's already showing in there, right? We've already, 'cause when we first did our budget, we was three million something in the hole, correct?
What you, no.
The budget we approved.
Yes, that was before we closed the books on fiscal year twenty-four.
Right, so are you telling me the money we've got left over from twenty-twenty-four is not showing in this money right now?
What, what do you?
I should've waited till that one, shouldn't I?
The financial report.
The financial report.
I think what she's expressing, Mr. Markham, is if we, Ms. Fowler, don't let me speak for you, but let me just try to walk through this. The, what we would, this, if we added this, this would be our budgetary, our budgetary amount that would go into, would amend our budget for this calendar year to include those holidays if we decided to amend our policy to include President's Day as a paid holiday.
Right.
So what you would say, we would be amending the budget, which we've already established the budget, so this would be an addition, additional amount that would be, that would go into our budget that we've already passed. Is that correct, Mr. Markham? So we're walking through, so that's, so when you're saying, you know, the budget we passed in that deficit, it's, this would be in addition to that, so you're correct.
It'd grow that deficit.
It would grow, it would buy twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars probably.
Right.
But in reality, do we think it's gonna be in that deficit? I don't think that we are, or at least to that extent.
Right, we don't think so, but there's a possibility, we're not gonna be as much maybe, but we could still be in a deficit, correct?
I'm not gonna say we're not, but I would be very surprised if we were in a very high deficit.
Two months into the fiscal year, it's.
I know, that's why it's kinda hard to, nothing, I love our teachers, so nobody take anything offense, please, but I've had a lot of phone calls, because when we passed our budget, we was negative three million something in the hole, and so that's why I'm asking questions. I told them I'd ask questions tonight, so it's just hard.
Thoughts, comments?
Mr. McDonald?
Since we are, yeah, since we are centrally financed, is, and I know the county, is the county off on President's Day?
Yes.
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 So.
School is closed on President's Day, and that's a paid holiday for a lot of employees, but for those that it's not, that's what we're talking about. For those that still have to work on that day, and for those that aren't paid that day, the amount would be twenty-six thousand dollars, or just shy of twenty-six thousand dollars to make sure everybody was paid that day off.
Okay. It's eye-opening, very eye-opening to see how much we pay out of the day for all the staff, and I mean, they deserve it. I, I, don't get me wrong, they deserve it, and I'm like, Ms. Fowler, I don't want anybody thinking that I'm not for it, because I think it's a, it's a very eye-opening number to see put out in front of you, when you realize how many employees you have, and how many, how much money goes out each day through our county, so I was just wondering about the county employees, if, you know, if the county's shut down that day, everybody else is off, I mean, it just, it makes sense to me, but I worry about money as well.
Being a, well, being a new board member, not part of the budget that was passed prior to being on the board, is it typical that we're, we come into it three million in the hole, or just help a little education might be good for us?
No, I mean, Mr. Markham can back this up, but we usually overestimate our, we overestimate our expenditures and we underestimate our revenues, and so we run what I call a deficit budget in the sense that we think, on paper, it looks like we're gonna be in a hole, but as we said last year, we ran that, but we ended up putting back close to two million dollars in the bank. So, you know, on paper, it looks in parentheses that we're running in a hole, but when it settles down, it comes to the end, we don't spend as much as we normally do, so, as we projected. So that's what we've run, you know, what's been different this particular year is just with the change in TISA funding and with us having to pick up several things that came out of ESER and several number of different things, and the changing in our formula and the amount of money that we've received, and a reduction midway or three-quarters of the way through the year, they just reduced the amount of money that we were getting. It changed some things, it kind of scrutinized where we were in that process a little bit more, so, yeah, so we have, we have yet in my tenure to finish below our estimates. We've put money back in every year, with the exception of one year where we had double payments on two mortgages on the middle school in Northfield, and we started Finley, and we knew that year was gonna be that one year, but outside of that, we've been, we put positive cash back into the bank each year.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good point, though, Mr. Smith. Maybe we need to get them the paperwork, just to let them see from our budget what it was last year.
And if it's somewhere in the ether, and I was supposed to have known that, I apologize.
No, 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 no.
I actually laid mine out of my backpack before I come.
Just, just for, if I'm not mistaken, going through and getting, this looks like it's gonna have an impact, we're talking about an impact of somewhere between one-hundred-and-twenty-five and one-hundred people.
Oh, yeah.
Support staff.
I haven't had that.
I was just going through and looking at, you know, when it, it's got it breaking down the mechanics, the maintenance, bus attendants, so you've got, basically you've got, what would that be, fourteen, you've got thirty-eight custodians, so that's gonna, fourteen, that's gonna put it up around fifty-two, another six drivers, that puts it up close to fifty-eight, plus another thirty-four drivers, that puts it up close to ninety-two, and then we've got, it's got ninety-one assistants is what I'm seeing here, so it's, you know, it's a token to, it's not just a small num, a big number going to a small group of people, it's, you know, it's been widespread, 'cause it impacts a fair amount of support staff.
And the number's even larger, because it affects food service as well, but that's something that will come out of Ms. Savage's budget for food, school nutrition, which is outside of this budget, but I've talked with her, and she felt like she could handle that if the board chose that her budget could afford to pay her people as well, so.
So that's the, so that's the financial impact, so what is a board, what our action would be, is, would be back to our policy fifty-three-ten, do we add President's Day to the list of vacation days and make that paid for the assistant secretaries, nurses, basically the support staff? So it would be a modification of policy, not necessarily saying where the, you know, where the money's going to, we see where the money's going to and what the cost is, so we understand the impact of our decision on policy change. So.
Do you wanna leave that in, a consent, or do you wanna pull it out?
So there's a couple of things we could do, and it'd be board's discretion. If you think we need to have more discussion on that, we could pull it out and put it as a new business item, or if you want to consent to adding that to our vacation days on our policy fifty-three-ten, that would be the other option. But we'd have to have consent on, if we, consent means that we would consent to it going in and updating that policy.
Unanimously, right?
Correct, unanimously. So if any, one member wants to pull it out for discussion, we can do that, it's not a problem.
When is President's Day, February?
February twenty-something. We could pull it out and give you a chance to think about it till next meeting as well. So I tell you what, since it is in February, let's pull that out, and we will put that as an agenda item for our meeting in October, and then that way we can, I don't think that's gonna happen, that's really not gonna be impactful for us financially between now and then anyway, is it?
No.
Okay, all right, so we'll add that to agenda item for next week. All right, so then moving on through our list, there was changes to our testing policy, and this would be.
I actually believe this was addressed in first reading last month, I think it's just leftover from the last meeting, you're, I mean, I believe that we, I went back and looked at that, I felt like it was addressed, but.
I thought it was.
Because we had, it was time-sensitive to some of the things.
And we proved that.
So it's really in there for reference this time, if I'm correct on that.
All right, so no action will be taken on that. That was listed, courses that were eligible for, that students could test out of, so that's correct. We won't have any action taken on that. Policy forty-four oh three, that was, that was a addition to our library materials policy. Find some clarity on that, everybody have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Policy, any questions on that?
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then next would be the policy forty-six hundred. Could you explain this as far as grading floors with minimum above zero or not permitted? I was having a hard time getting my head wrapped around.
Yeah, there's actually a law now that says that schools cannot have a policy that says that there is a, that there's a, that there's a grading floor with a minimum above zero, so you can't say, like any high school can't have a policy that says the lowest grade you can make is a fifty and then build from there, so this, they, means if they earn it thirty, then that's what they get, is a thirty, but you can't have a policy on that, and we cannot.
All right, so that's just clarifying that we will not have policy on that, and so that's an update to forty-six hundred. Is there any, is there any, anything regarding those policies that would be time-sensitive that we would need passed on policy forty-four three and forty-six hundred?
No, we don't have, no, not at all, and forty-six hundred, we don't have that in place now, so there's no, there would be nothing if it was pushed to second reading next month, wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, so board members in consent, we're coming out of this meeting, policy fifty-three-hundred is gonna be tabled and it'll be agenda item next month. We, policy forty-seven hundred, testing, that was covered last month, so that's not gonna be a consent item. What we'll be doing is we'll be regarding policy, we'll be updating, we'll be passing on first reading forty-four oh three and forty-six hundred in our consent, and then we'll be reviewing section two policies, and I'll be sending everyone policies out, your assignments out for review for next month, and also like to include our school board, our school representatives to assign you some policies as well, give you a little homework, and so we'll go through those. And I just shared a link to you, comments on the review of section one policies, so there's a file that has everybody's comments as we look through that. What I'd like to do, and hopefully we can work this into our next committee meeting, excuse me, work session, is that we can come back and revisit that, that'll give you new board members opportunity to look at policies in section one and see kind of what we were doing, how we were reviewing those policies, and then we'll try to, we'll try to allocate time next month to cover both of those in the comments, feedback. I do appreciate your feedback, board members that did look at that, those policies, and I think this is just good and healthy, not that we weren't doing it before, but at least now we're getting some documentation on it. All right, also including in your pack is, we have a maintenance report for the month of September, where it talks about the activities that were taking place at all various schools. We have quite a bit of maintenance taking place, and we are thankful that the new road sign at Northfield has been installed. Any questions regarding the maintenance report?
I would just like to say the new Northfield sign looks absolutely great.
Middle school got one as well, and.
Oh, yeah, I'll have to drop by.
And Bondi Crofts will be coming.
Yes, now we did see part of the Bondi Crofts.
Yeah, it's been wrapped, but the digital part's on it, coming soon.
Yeah, it looks great, too.
All right. So then going through our, through our, next we have a school report, and that's where you receive update from all the, from the administrators at each school, updating on things that are taking place there. As noted in our weekly update from Mr. Drumbarger, a lot of benchmarking's taking place, and so getting that prepared, and you see that referenced in the school report. Middle schools enjoying homecoming this week, and so a lot of activities taking place there, and also next week's homecoming here at the high school, so looking forward to that, and wish both, both those schools a enjoyable week as they enjoy homecoming. So anything, any comments you'd like to bring up on regarding the school report?
My daughter started middle school this year, so I'm gonna try and ban dances. Just wanna go on the record as saying that.
Okay, what kind of dances?
Square dances.
Square dances.
Hoedons.
All right. Okay, we'll move on, next item on our, in our list is our budget report, and so that is what Ms. Fowler was speaking to a little bit earlier. Mr. Markham has, provides us each month a report that shows our current budget, year budget, which would be fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. He also provides for comparison, last year's budget, which would be budget for twenty-twenty-four, as you see on your packet, so you can see there, you have a comparison, you see what this year's budget is versus what last year's budget is, you can see the pace of revenues versus the pace of expenses and how that tracks. Mr. Markham, if you, Mr. Drumbarger or Mr. Markham, either one, if you'd like to speak through that budget for us, I'll certainly give you the time to do that.
Please. So you'll see on the left-hand column is the current year fiscal budget, fiscal year budget that we're operating under. We operate on a July to June fiscal year, so we're in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, because it is June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five, so at this point, this is through August, so this is two months into our fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty-five, we're projecting just over thirty-eight million dollars in revenues in the general purpose school fund, and so far we've collected just over three. Our revenue collections, as you'll notice throughout the year, are heavier between October and March, obviously for property tax collections, but also we have some heavy sales tax collections during that period as well. Otherwise, it's pretty, pretty steady throughout. Our expenditures are somewhat outpaced, or somewhat outpace our revenues during the first part of the year, and eventually catches back up. But just to kind of give you an idea of how we compare to the previous August of twenty-twenty-three, you'll see that on the right-hand side, just some things to point out. Our first TISA payment, which replaced, our second year of TISA, replaced the BEP, that has been received and is reflected in that state of Tennessee revenue number that you see there, that's the first one of the year. Salaries and benefits are up slightly compared to the same period last year in August, but obviously this is expected based on the salary scale and adjustments there. Utilities, travel and communication, you'll see those listed there in your expenditures, they're within our expected range for this point within the fiscal year, we don't see any, have any concerns there. Liability insurances came in slightly lower than what we'd anticipated in the budget, about twenty-five thousand dollars, so that's good news, and we pay all of those upfront in July, and so that's why that number is, that line item is pretty much maxed out for the year. Capital outlays, expenditures are lower than at this point in the previous fiscal year, but this is just due to the timing of projects getting started and some timing issues there, and that'll catch up as we go on throughout the year. Overall, we're running about a hundred and sixty-five thousand more in the deficit as compared to this same point last year. Overall, we're running about a hundred and sixty-five thousand more in the deficit as compared to this same point last year. But, you know, we don't find this concerning based on timing of revenues and expenditures. So all in all, we're pretty, pretty much dead on where we were at this point last year, and I don't see any issues as far as that goes.
What would fall under that, all other expenses, that one-point-five-million-dollar line at the very bottom?
Everything else.
That's a lot of money.
I would expect that from John Smith, but not you, Chad.
There's lots of different things there. So obviously, we break out our salaries and benefits, which is by far our largest expense. So that would be like, let's see, that would be like some of our software expenses, some of our parts for vehicles, supplies, instructional equipment, those kind of things fall into, fall into that other category.
It's just a large number, that's, I mean, that's the reason I was, I was just curious.
Okay, any other budget questions? Mr. Markham, we appreciate you giving us that concise and thorough update of our budget and letting us know that financially, we're, we're in good, in good shape right now. So next, we'll go down our, on the consent agenda items, is TLN report. We do not have a TLN report for this month because legislature is not in session. But we will also be looking to fill that position later in our, our regular, regular meeting. Including your packet was a monthly threat assessment report, so you have information there. As you look, there's four items on there, but three of those four were connected. And the other one is, the other one's closed. So all in all, that's, that's a low percentage of issues, and we hope that continues to stay that way as we go throughout the year. Any questions on, regarding the threat assessment report?
We're still working through that, that threat assessment from the middle school?
No.
Is it closed now?
I feel like it's closed.
Okay, thank you.
So they're all, all closed?
Yes.
Okay, so all those have been closed. Advocate tracking, you can see from the month of August, the number of applicants and interviews and hires that were made for the month of August. We are at full staff, all positions filled, so that's a good thing as we, as we head into the, this year. Next, we get into the- Is this in the right spot?
It was just part of the personnel report.
Oh, okay, alright, I'm sorry.
I wanted, probably you might be interested to see how many particular teachers we had in certain areas.
Okay, got it.
Actually, I thought that was very neat, actually.
I thought that went-
Ms. Ali provided, it was just part of the extension of the personnel report.
Okay, I thought that went with the salary schedule, didn't realize that. So yeah, you can see we're, we're a, from an employment standpoint, employer standpoint in the community, we're, we rank right up there with one of the larger. So certainly thankful that we can provide those jobs, and we have people willing to serve in those positions. Next, we go into, along with that, you see the personnel changes that were part of that personnel report. So that leads us to the portion of fundraisers. We have one fundraiser request for Bondi Croft Elementary. They're wanting to do a build-a-thon, including build their own stuffed animals, and that's their, that's what they're proposing. And I guess that they're gonna, I'll read that, they're gonna do that in the, from February to March next year.
And there's actually another one down, is a spirit night at Texas Roadhouse.
For Bondi Croft as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, so they have, there's two fundraiser requests by, by Bondi Croft. Do we have any questions, comments on those, the requests that are being made of us? They're actually not requesting us to fund anything, they're just requesting our approval to, for them to proceed.
Could Ms. Cope maybe let us know when that is for Texas Roadhouse?
Sure.
The board members?
Sounds like somebody's hungry.
I am, y'all can hear most of them, they go right in.
Alright, any other questions regarding that fundraiser request? Okay, then we have an out-of-state travel request. We have to, we have, we have to approve all overnight travels for, as a board. And the baseball team has, the high school has, is asking our approval for them to go and participate in a tournament in March in Gulf Shores, Alabama. So that was included in, in your packet. There's in, the field trip requests, the breakdown of the, the funding that's, that's, that will be, be required for that. It's not costing, this has been paid for by the team and, and their booster club. So nothing coming from the, no requests being made from, from, from the board, other than requesting our approval. Any questions on, on that, out-of-state travel request?
Does every player get to go? Do we know how many's on the team?
It says twenty.
It says twenty.
Twenty estimated.
But it says, we anticipate bringing around twenty players, so I didn't know if there was more.
I don't know how many are on the team.
I kind of say though, that those out-of-state travels, the opportunity to get to do that is absolutely amazing.
I agree.
Well, you could, you could take those memories with you for the rest of your life.
Well, it seems like we have, we have some support down there from our student representatives, so, so I think we all should, should take note of that. They have a voice, they don't get a voice, a vote, but they do have a voice, so.
That's right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
In, in the budget that's been presented, it talks about mini vans from Enterprise, and I'm assuming BNA is Nashville Airport?
Yes.
I, I guess I wonder why we wouldn't do that, it could work. But maybe they don't have them, it could work.
I actually want to follow up with him on that because it's during spring break, so I don't know why we couldn't use our own vans.
I was actually gonna ask about that.
So I was gonna follow up with the coach on that, but we wanted to get approval so they can make plans, and then we'll figure out how we can lower their budget in that process.
So we, we would just be approving them getting to go, not-
Correct, they would have to approve any overnight travel and any out-of-state travel, and this is both, so. But it, yeah, they're not missing any school for this.
Sounds good.
Oh, man.
Alright, any other questions on that out-of-state travel request? Then next is the items that, for sale, for disposal. Their serving line, a double convection oven, another double combined oven, a milk cooler, a couple of vending machine kiosks, and a vending cart. So those have been requested, it looks like those are all coming from, from the-
School nutrition.
School nutrition, so those are items that we've been asking, those go on GovDeals, I think, online. So we just give our approval for allowing those assets to be sold. Any question on that, on those items for, for disposal? Okay, then the last one is the salary scale for twenty-four, twenty-five, that has, that we have to approve. So, Mr. Ronbarger, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, the first file is your certified scale, which is your, your teacher's scale. That was an increase of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars across the scale. So it's addressed just across the entire scale for all the certified positions. And then I believe we did a three percent, a three percent increase for the staff position. So the scales themselves didn't really change, or those amounts by those incremental changes.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, I mean, this is, I don't know that we did it last, or I did it last time, but, and Mr. De, you might be able to answer this question. Would this be a conflict of interest for me as the pay scale comes up? I don't think it was when we approved it the last time, but just want to be, you know, open and upfront, you know?
In my opinion, you're approving the pay scale for the district, and you're, you're, any relative in your family is going to fall on that scale, so you're approving that scale. You're not approving any specific raise for any person in your family. In my opinion, I'm not, not a lawyer, but in my opinion, I think you're approving the whole district scale and where your family falls on that, would fall within that approved scale.
I mean, if that was the case, and I guess I couldn't really, the budget would be a conflict of interest.
Correct, you have the budget. Which is going to go there as well. So I, I think as long as you're making the notation at the beginning of the meeting, that you're, you're doing the best inch of the district. I mean, you're, you're not addressing a specific grade.
There's three of us, you know, still on, you know, that have family in this district, so.
Oh, yeah.
Not an attorney, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think if it was something that was going to benefit either any, any spouse specifically and not as a whole, I think that would be something you'd want to consider. But in this, this case, no, because then what you end up with, you have, can end up with two or three, approving all the budgets and things, and that's outside the scope. So I think you're, you're fine. Your, your declaration before, before the meetings will cover that. Okay, any questions on the updated pace, staff pay scale? Okay, if, if not, then let's just review, appreciate your patience as we go through this. But what we're going to do is, on the consent agenda, we're going to be pulling out consideration of the amendment to policy fifty-three ten, and everything else would be approved on consent, okay? So that being said, we will, we will adjourn our, our work session and give ourselves about five minutes to get ready for start of our regular meeting, okay? Alright, thank you. It's called the September 12th meeting of the White County Board of Education to order. If you would, please stand. Mr. Jason McDonald is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, especially like to thank Mr. Wilson and his staff for the hospitality. Looking forward to our presentation from our FFA students this evening, and just thank you for being here, your support in White County education. Well, I'd just like to thank this time to represent four of our new board members who are actually participating for the first time as elected official. I have Ms. Lisa Officer from District One, we have Mr. John Smith from District Three, we have Ms. Terry Douglas from District Four, and we have Ms. Isabella Sackett, who is our newest student representative, and so like to welcome them to our board meeting tonight, and appreciate you guys being willing to serve. Tennessee Code Annotate and Board Policy 1400 states that every meeting of the board is open to the public except where law allows a closed session. The agenda for the board meeting are posted on the district website at www dot whiteco schools dot net at least three days prior to each meeting. Each meeting agenda by law includes an item reserved for public comment. Sign-up sheet is made available prior to the beginning of the regular meetings. Individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign-up sheet when we come to the public comment portion of our agenda. Board meetings are recorded with help of Warrior Media for live streaming and recorded viewing. Links are provided on the district's website. An attending or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent for comments and appearances to be part of that recording. Tonight's meeting covers a variety of administrative tasks for the board, as well as presentation by Mr. Wilson and our FFA program. While the school year has gotten off to a good start, it hasn't been without some tragedy. In August, the middle school lost two of its students, Kiara Everett and Aiden Linville, to accident and illness, and so before we get any further in our meeting, would we pause for a moment of silence for those students' families? Thank you. This time we, it brings us to item four on our agenda, and that's disclosure of conflicts of interest. If there's any board member tonight that has a conflict of interest on any of the items that are on the agenda being proposed before us, please let that be known now.
Mr. Chairman, as I do each and every month, I just want to make the statement that my wife is a employee of this district, and all the things that you hear from me tonight will be in the best interest of this district and have no reflection on her, so I just want to make that publicly known.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, my husband is also an employee of this district, and my decisions are mine, and they're for the best of the district.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
My wife is an employee of this district. My opinions and my comments are mine and mine alone.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So Ms. Sims, please let note in the minutes that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all have spouses that are working, work within the district, but nothing on the agenda for tonight would pose as a conflict of interest for them as conflicts of interest are defined. So next item on our agenda is approval for the agenda for tonight's meeting, so board members, that agenda has been sent out to you, and you have the opportunity to review that. In our work session prior to this meeting, do note that the, in the consent agenda, we have pulled out policy, the policy 5310, that is coming out of our, that was discussed in policy, that is not going to be part of tonight's consent agenda. So this time, I'd like to have, entertain a motion for approval of the, for the agenda of this meeting.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Smith to have a second.
Second.
Second, with Ms. Power. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. In our work session, we reviewed the minutes from meetings that was held on August 8th, as well as the regular meeting and our work session. We've covered our budget transfers and amendments and transfers, had the policy report, maintenance report, our school report, the school budget report, which included approval of district salary scale. There was no T N report this month. We have a monthly threat assessment report that we reviewed along with personnel. Bondi Croft PTO has requested two fundraisers, and the White County High School baseball team has requested out-of-state travel for the month of May of 2025. There are a few items of cafeteria surplus that will be sold, and then we haven updated the staff pay scale as was presented to us. So those were the items, part of our consent, so given the fact that that was consent of all members, just need a motion for approval.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. McDonald to have a second.
Second.
Second, with Ms. Douglas. Any other discussion? Okay, here none, all those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda, I'd like to recognize Mr. Greg Wilson, Principal of the White County High School. He's going to speak with us tonight about school health heroes. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Young. We want to welcome everyone to our campus tonight. We're very proud of our students and the hard work and the countless hours that our teachers and staff put in for our current student success and to ensure that success. When it comes to school health heroes, we didn't have to look very far on the campus. Our first hero is Mrs. Heather Whitaker. She's entering her fourth year here at our alma mater as our school nurse. Mrs. Whitaker is a vital piece of the puzzle that makes up the high school. She knows the kids, and she's one of our main goals here at WCHS, and that's building relationships with our students. She attended TCAT and Cross School, and started in the school system in 2012, and I'm privileged tonight to introduce our WCHS health hero, Miss Heather Whitaker. And we appreciate you. Thank you. With Mr. Drowbarger's support, we have stabilized our health science nursing program here at WCHS, and we've hired two more WCHS alums, and a fact that was brought to me today that with our homecoming coming up next week, we have 69 WCHS graduates on our staff this year, which is phenomenal, and I'm proud to be one of them. But with the leadership in our program now, we're blessed to have two registered nurses instructing our students, and that's Mrs. Haley Will and Mrs. Shelby Luna. They'll come forward, please. Both of these young ladies are a phenomenal duo here, and they do a fabulous job instructing our kids, and they're vital assets to our program here in our health science and nursing program. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Will and Mrs. Luna, and they're going to give you some information on four of our future health heroes who are beginning their training right here at WCHS.
So I cover the therapeutic services pathway, and I'd like to recognize two students, Juliana Domito and Autumn Phillips. Both are seniors here at White County High School, and I just want to share a little bit about them. So Juliana's program of study is therapeutic services, and she's making plans for a career as a physical therapist. She is considered a completer within her program. Within her program, she has completed the courses of health science, anatomy and physiology, and pharmacology, and she has also participated in the work-based learning clinical internship program. She's done clinical rotations at Cumberland Family Care and Cumberland Physical Therapy, and she'll be continuing her clinical internship hours at Cumberland Physical Therapy again this spring. Through the program, Juliana has earned her OSHA 10 industry certification and her CPR certification. She is also an active member in HOSA and is part of the softball team. She is currently employed at Yanni's here in Sparta, and she plans to attend Mottla for two years and then transfer to DTU to major in kinesiology, to help her reach her career goals. Autumn's program of study is therapeutic services and is making plans for a career in ultrasonography and radiology. After the completion of this semester, Autumn will be graduating early. Autumn has job shadowed with the ultrasonographer Celeste Smith at Sweet Baby Imaging in Cookeville. Autumn has plans to attend Ball State Community College and study ultrasonography. She has taken health science, anatomy and physiology, and is currently taking pharmacological science. Through these courses, she has earned her OSHA 10 industry cert and her CPR certification. She's currently employed and works at Publix in Cookeville, and she is an active member of HOSA. She is also one of our social media representatives for HOSA.
My name is Haley Will. I am the one that teaches the nursing services here at the high school. So the two students I have are both seniors. First, this is Carolyn, this is Carolyn McCann. Carolyn's program of study is nursing services, and she is a completer within her program of study. She has taken the following courses: Health Science, Anatomy and Physiology, Medical Assistant, Pharmacy Technician, and currently enrolled in Certified Nursing Assistant Program. Carolyn plans to graduate this December and wants to attend Tennessee Tech University to obtain her Masters of Science in Nursing. Throughout our program, Carolyn has completed OSHA 10 industry certification and CPR certification. She is also an active member of HOSA. Currently, Carolyn is working towards her license to become a CNA. In December, she will sit for her state exam for her CNA license. She wishes to obtain her CNA license and be able to work as a CNA through nursing school. Carolyn's goal after nursing school is to obtain a job as a labor and delivery nurse. All right, and this is Belle. Belle's program of study is nursing services, and she is well as a completer of our program of study. She has taken the following courses: Health Science, Anatomy and Physiology, and Pharmacy Technician. Next semester, she will be enrolled in our clinical internship program, where she will like to shadow and work beside a school nurse at the elementary school. Belle plans to graduate in May and attend Vanderbilt University in hopes to earn her Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. She would like to start her career as a pediatric nurse. Throughout our program, she has also completed her OSHA 10 industry certification, her CPR certification. She is an active member of HOSA and serves as our president, and she is currently works at Taco Bell in DeKalb County. Belle is an active member in many clubs and sports of our school, including Beta Club, band, and bowling.
Board, we'd like to thank each of you for taking the time to visit our campus here at WCHS, and we're glad to host you guys. Your presence and support means a lot to us here at WCHS, and again, I can't thank you enough for all the thanks you give at WCHS. Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Wilson before he sits down?
Too late.
Mr. Wilson, thank you, appreciate the good work that's taking place here at White County High School, you and your staff, and all the students for the hard work and dedication, and great examples of students really going the extra mile to achieve in their careers. So that's great, and wish them all the best. Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Eller and Mr. Moore. I think they have a presentation by the FFA, so.
We do, but our students are going to.
All right, well then we'll allow you to defer to the students.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We are the White County FFA chapter. Today, we are here to talk to you about the many opportunities FFA brings to our students and community in White County. Before we begin, we would like to introduce ourselves. I'm Will Stockton, I'm the chapter president.
I'm Isabella Sackett, I'm the junior vice president.
I'm Addie King, I'm the chapter reporter.
I'm Olivia Hart, and I'm the chapter treasurer.
I'm Reece Sylvian, I'm the parliamentary.
I'm Landa Lopez, and I'm the Building Communities Committee Chair.
I'm Dylan Parrish, I'm the senior vice president.
I'm Marlo Sylvian, I'm the secretary.
I'm Kevin Ryan, I'm the chaplain.
I'm Katie Eller, and I'm the sophomore vice president.
I'm Hunter Rixby, and I'm the strengthening agriculture committee chair.
I'm McKenna Hughes, and I'm the historian.
I'm Brian Powell, and I'm the student advisor.
I'm Collier Steele, and I'm the senate.
Thank you. Let's begin.
To grow the next generation of leaders that will change the world, that is the vision that as FFA members we live by daily. Now, I was always the kid that knew exactly what they wanted to be, and while it may have changed every couple months, I was sure in that moment, I knew. I was always set on one thing. I wanted to help people and make a difference in my community, but I wasn't quite sure how to get to that point. Through FFA, I've developed the leadership skills I needed to accomplish my goals. When I grow up, I'm going to be a lawyer that specializes in ag and family law. Addie is going to be an agriculture marketing and communications specialist. Will wants to be an accountant. Marlo wants to be a real estate agent. Olivia wants to be a florist. Camden wants to be a wildlife professor, and Brianna wants to be a poultry scientist. Though our passions are very different from each other, we've each developed the skills we needed through our time in FFA. As students in the FFA, we develop active listening, problem-solving, and decision-making skills. We grow as competent and assertive leaders and strengthen our confidence through LDEs, leadership development events, CDEs, career development events, social events, camps, conferences, and so much more. The leadership skills we develop help us live out our vision to grow the next generation of leaders that will change the world. Whether you are a freshman or a senior in high school, FFA provides the resources and opportunities needed for career success. When I started my FFA journey, I thought that it was impossible for me to have a career in agriculture, because I didn't have a background in it. But soon, I found out that there truly is a career for everyone in agriculture. Career development events, or CDEs for short, allow students to try competitions in a variety of career paths to find which ones they enjoy. For me, that's the Agriculture Communications Contest that showcases different media skills such as web design, journalism, and even video editing. I now know that I want to get a degree in agriculture communications. Think about how many other students don't believe that they can have a career in agriculture, or even the ones that think they can, but don't know exactly where they fit in. CDEs give FFA members the opportunity to learn about fields including veterinary science, meat judging, forestry, floriculture, and many more. FFA gives students a head start on their future careers and makes sure that they are successful in whatever they may choose.
At the beginning of my freshman year, Mr. Moore and Ms. Eller told me to go to one competition, and you'll win both. Well, two years later, and I've competed in close to or more than half of the competitions we as a chapter participated in. I've stepped out of my comfort zone and grown personally through doing speaking competitions that I never would have thought about if it wasn't for FFA. FFA has given me the opportunity to grow my confidence in my speaking and leadership skills. I've become a better leader, a better speaker, and a better person throughout FFA. SAEs are very important for this organization. SAEs are supervised agriculture experiences and offer hands-on opportunities to experience all aspects of agriculture. SAEs are projects students complete outside of school. You don't have to live on a farm to have an SAE. The categories are broad, such as ag communications, entrepreneurship, and if you do live on a farm, there are production SAEs. That is just a couple different types, there are so many more. Last year, we had five regional proficiency winners and one state winner, all based on SAEs. Through SAEs, members can apply for proficiency awards.
Apart from allowing our members to gain valuable experience, FFA provides a step in building connections and bringing our communities together. Through my short time in FFA, I have had the opportunity to meet with state and local leaders like Senator Paul Bailey and Mayor Jerry Lowery. Additionally, I have met several business leaders and organization leaders through our connections with farm bureaus, co-ops, and extension agencies. These opportunities give FFA members a chance to build connections for future endeavors.
The White County Agricultural Program, FFA, offers a variety of work-based learning opportunities that lead into a variety of career fields. From vet offices, co-op, UT Extension Services, and school-based enterprises, there is a variety of career options for you. My work-based learning is at the White County Farmers Co-op, because I'm interested in becoming a livestock nutritionist, and having work-based learning classes helping me get my foot in the door and gain real-world experience.
Our classrooms are not the traditional classrooms, we are interactive and hands-on. My sophomore year in small animal science, Ms. Eller taught me how to groom. Through my experience of learning how to groom in the classroom, I'm now a part of our work-based learning and school-based enterprise, WAC. In WAC, we not only groom, but learn basic bookkeeping, accounting, customer service...
In WAGS, we not only groom, but learn basic bookkeeping, accounting, customer service, and custom, customer service to run a small business. In Large Animal Science, we learn how to take care of the animals at the barn. We oversee their life from infancy to breed or market animals. The sale of these animals at our breakfast at the barn continually fund our animal programs.
As a chapter, we focus a lot on being responsible citizens. Every semester, we take a hike, usually around the Bridgestone Firestone Wildlife Management Area, and learn about the many native plants and animals and how to preserve them and their ecosystem for future generations to enjoy. Additionally, for the past two years, we have hosted our Blue and Gold Blessings Lunch to feed and personally thank individuals who serve our community on a daily basis, like the White County Sheriff's Department, Sparta Police Department, and Sparta Public Works Department.
FFA gives members opportunities to learn success by SAEs, competing in competitions, and doing agri-science fair projects. I personally have learned success by placing first runner-up in the state agri-science fair and third in my region for diversified livestock proficiency. FFA members can not only learn success and get success from FFA, but it can provide success opportunities for the chapter. The White County FFA Chapter has earned, has learned success by earning a three-star national chapter award for the past two years. The chapter has also earned many more awards at the national and state level in membership and programs like Plow. These achievements inspire members to strive for personal and group success.
FFA gives members the opportunity to experience and advocate for agriculture no matter their background. We host a yearly tractor day at school where students can bring their tractors in to show to others. And we have an agriculture booth at the fair where we allow people to come in to learn more about the industry and where their food comes from. This year, we were able to add live demonstrations to our display, and I was fortunate enough to be able to educate the community about poultry production. We also bring out the fourth graders from local schools here in Sparta to learn more about livestock and jobs in agriculture through our partnership with Farm Bureau's Farm Day. We also like to share our love for agriculture through events like Liberty Square.
Many friendships are always seasonal. Maybe you had a childhood best friend that was your neighbor. Maybe you had a best friend that you met at a church or band camp. Let me tell you about the friendships that I've found in FFA. I was introduced into FFA my freshman year of high school. At the same time, though forging friendships is so important. It didn't take long for me to figure out that I didn't have to be super athletic or crazy smart just to fit in. I just did. The girl that had the extra hair tie, or the safety pins, or the, even the clear nail polish when you're moments away from going on stage, that is your best friend. The guy that brings an extra pair of dress socks that actually knows how to tie a tie, that is your best friend. The person that saves us from embarrassment, the person that calms us down when our anxiety is through the roof about public speaking, the person who lifts us up when we don't think our essay is good enough, that's your lifelong best friend. I quick, I quickly realized while being a member of the chapter, every member on this chapter is in different paths, we also share a common goal: the love of agriculture. Connections are made during chapter meetings, officer team meetings, and state conference, as well as meeting new chapters and national convention. As I stood in the Lucas Oil Stadium in Indiana last year among the record-setting crowd of almost seventy-three thousand FFA members and guests, I realized that the sea of blue corduroy jackets aren't just my friends, but that's my family. The gold thread that makes up the animal on our jackets also ties our lives together.
To summarize, FFA as a whole has gifted all of us here today with incredible opportunities as well as skills we can use later in life. We advocate for agriculture because we know just how important it is to our great nation. The agriculture industry supplies us with a hundred percent of our food, clothing, as well as millions of jobs. We fight because we know the future of agriculture is in our hands.
Thanks to the continuous support of the White County School District, our FFA Chapter continues to fight to preserve agriculture within our community. We'd love to thank y'all for listening to us tonight, and we'd like to invite y'all to the Pancake Breakfast at the Barn on September twenty-first.
Great presentation, uh, students, and, uh, just, uh, Ms. Eller, Ms. Moore, I'd thank you again for what you're, uh, what you're doing, that investment that you're making in these, uh, in these students' lives and, and FF, the FFA program and for Mr. Wilson's staff for, for supporting. Just, uh, well, uh, I just wish you well on your upcoming, uh, competitions and I look forward to hearing more good things about FFA. Board members, anybody else have comment? I'm sorry, I just kinda jumped in. I'm right, I'm just, I'm just really thankful that we have an FFA member on our, on our board as student representative, so you did well. Thank you, I'm really impressed with your public speaking.
Thank you so much.
If you wanna sit in this chair, you know...
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna say, uh, I got to come up, uh, one day last week, I'm not for sure, Ms. Eller, Friday, last Friday, and, uh, got to witness the WAGS program, uh, and, and just some of the other items that are going on, uh, in that, in the program as a whole. And, uh, I just wanna commend you guys, y'all were very professional when I was here, the officers that were there, uh, practicing for this event, uh, very professional, uh, you know, yes sir, no sir, uh, thank you for that, thank you for, uh, thank you to your advisors for, uh, instilling that, and, not, not only that, thank you to your parents for always instilling those, uh, those traits in you, uh, to be very respectful to whoever you're involved with. So, Mr. Moore, Ms. Eller, um, thank you for all that you do, uh, for the FFA program, but again, uh, kudos to, to this group and all the awards that you've won.
Anybody else? Alright, well, thank you again, and we appreciate you being here and presenting to us tonight. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is the selection of board officers. So, uh, each year we, uh, elect, uh, various officers and, but given the fact that we have two, uh, board members that transitioned off as of, uh, the end of August, we have two positions that we need to fill, and that is a Tennessee, Tennessee Legislative Representative, and then we need, uh, some, a budget representative. Uh, explain a little bit about both of those positions. The budget representative would be one that would give the, uh, financial report, or the budget report during our, uh, commit, our work sessions, and so be working with Mr. Markham to provide that information back to us and present that to us as, uh, present that information to the board. Uh, the TLN representative would be, uh, someone who would be willing, who is willing to, uh, stay up to date with the legislative activities that are taking place in Nashville. Uh, this is, a lot of information comes, uh, in the, uh, in the month of January, February, March, leading up to April, and so, uh, one that would, uh, keep track of items that are taking place and being discussed, bills that are being discussed in Nashville, and reporting back to us as, as a board. Uh, the TLN representative will also, uh, participate in the Legislative Conference that TSBA puts on in November, so, uh, they're...
Delegate Assembly.
I'm sorry, Delegate Assembly in, in November, and so that's one of the assignments responsibilities of, of, uh, member that'd be willing to, uh, to serve in that position. So, what we would do is, uh, I would, uh, open, uh, entertain nominations for, uh, we'll start with the TLN representative. Uh, we'll take nominations or volunteers before we become voluntold.
I'll, uh, I would like to nominate Ms. Terry Douglas for the TLN.
Okay.
I would second.
Alright, we have, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, we have nominations, does somebody want...
I will cease the nomination.
I have, I have nominations ceased, so, uh, that means, uh, unless there's any objections, Ms. Douglas will be, uh, our TLN representative by acclamation. Uh, next would be, uh, someone to fill our, our budget, uh, our, your budget liaison.
I ain't afraid to step out, I'll, I'll nominate John Smith.
I second. I make the case.
Alright, so, uh, thank you.
It is voluntold.
It is voluntold. You thought I was, I was just being sarcastic, it's, it's, there is an element of that on most of this board. Um, so, have, uh, nomination, John Smith serves as our budget representative, uh, and if with nothing, with no, uh, other discussion, we will, uh, Mr. Smith will serve in that position, that position by acclamation. So, uh, thank y'all for serving and look forward to your reports in future meetings. Uop reports will take place during our, um, our work sessions, uh, prior to the meeting unless there's an item that moves to the, uh, to the agenda of our, of our full, full meeting. So next, that brings us to item ten, and that is a district update. Uh, we'll yield to Mr. Tronberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, personnel reports in your folders for the month, you see all the personnel transactions. Currently, we're fully staffed, although we do have another teacher vacancy coming open at fall break. Uh, post-COVID, our district is seeing abnormal employment volatility. Uh, however, we've been very successful in filling those vacancies with quality candidates in a timely manner. Um, we're over a month into the new school year at this point, all schools are off to a good start, functioning well. Thank you to the school board for supporting the Twenty-First Century After School Program. That program began serving students in late, uh, August and is a great help to students, families, and teachers. On the safety front, a new lock project is underway at several schools. Woodland Park, it's been the first school to have their door locks replaced. Uh, this provides a much safer environment and more efficient key system for our schools. Upgraded camera systems have been installed, and all schools are, uh, conducting safety drills as required as we continue to meet the district, with district leaders to ensure compliance and excellence in this area. Uh, academically, our school's success team comprised of teachers and administrators is working on, with consultants from NIET to address specific areas of need at White County Middle School. But across the district, the teachers, uh, teacher evaluations have begun for the fall semester, and teachers are using student test data to, uh, daily, uh, guide their lessons and develop intervention plans for their students. District supervisors are working closely with school administrators and teachers to ensure excellent instructional practices and tutoring. Uh, financially, the FRC received several thousands of dollars in donations to help families in need. And district-wide, we are currently on track with revenues and spending compared to last year. Teacher pay was increased this year at a rate slightly, slightly higher than the award that was, amount that was awarded by the state, and staff raises were increased, increased by three percent to adjust for inflation. Athletically, elementary basketball season has begun this week, and senior passes are being recognized, uh, if there was any issue with that. Uh, fall sports are deep in their seasons, will enter tournament season, uh, this time next month. Uh, building projects, Bondycroft is all but complete at this point, although not officially closed. Uh, this is also the case for the WCMS Greenhouse Project. Architects have made an initial visit to Doyle Elementary and are working on plans for a six-classroom addition proposal to the front of that school. New awnings have been installed at W, at WCHS, and new road signs have been addressed at White County Middle School and Northfield. The Bondycroft digital sign will be installed soon. Uh, and finally, we all love the fair, but as school leaders, we're a little glad that it's gone. Our focus is now on learning over the next four weeks as we plow ahead towards fall break in October, and this completes the director's report. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for our director?
I'd ask your school board representatives, um, does the fair really impact your ability to, to learn?
Actually, I'm on the youth board, and I stay, I stay in the school zone when I'm here, and when I'm at the fair, I'm in my, like, happy, I, I love the fair, so...
Are you tired? Do you like, get really tired when we're out? Not much sleep?
No, I'm good. I run off, I run off my little morning drink, so...
Do you, uh, do you lobby for teachers not to test during fair week?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler, they're teenagers, they don't know what being tired is.
I know, I'm tired from the fair.
Alright, um, any other comments, questions for our director about his report?
I, I just got one, speaking of Doyle, so this is a six-classroom addition, correct? Nothing for the gym? I'm looking at Jason down there.
I've had several requests for...
I had somebody call me this week.
Were they right after a basketball game?
Yes.
With six more classrooms, I don't know where you're gonna put them people in the gym.
Yeah, well, the, usually that, we get that about this time every year. Uh, it's, it's a problem about six nights out of the year, uh, and so we just, uh, and not, not against doing it, but it is a big expense, and then we'd have to address the gyms at Bondycroft and Cassville probably as well, because they're a similar size. Um, so, I think I would do something different with elementary basketball before I would spend millions of dollars to improve the size of those gyms, but, uh, that seems to be when, even our award ceremonies, we've split up into, you know, say K-two and three-five, so we've been able to alleviate the crowds there, but it's really during basketball season when it becomes an issue, so we could livestream games and, uh, do reserved seating and do some different things to eliminate, eliminate that before we would spend millions of dollars, I think, on the gyms. But not close to it, but it'd be a really expensive solution to increase the size just for those cer, those few amount of nights.
I was down there at awards for the three through five, yes, I, I do agree, and there was still people just standing, yeah.
Okay. Any other, uh, any other questions, comments for, for our director? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move into the next item on our agenda. Uh, board members, I was, I was contacted by two families, uh, that asked for an appeal to the board, uh, regarding, uh, decisions on residency. And so, it, from a residency standpoint, um, the board, uh, following state, state guidelines, the board is responsible for putting policy in place to, that aligns with residency requirements and restrictions. Um, part of that is our, how, why we establish a tuition for out-of-county residents to be able to come and, uh, attend school here if, uh, if administration, uh, allows that to happen, but we, we're the ones that established the policy for that. Um, so that is, a policy jurisdiction is what, uh, what we're responsible for. Um, as far as the, uh, overseeing and carrying out our policy, that falls under the, the director or the administrators, and that is the area where they have, have jurisdiction. So, um, regarding, you know, residency, we established that and how we handle out-of, out-of-state, uh, excuse me, out-of-county district residents, uh, attending school in our district. Um, but, uh, the, the Smith family and the Mullins family asked, asked if they could, uh, appeal their, their decision to the board tonight. I allowed them to, uh, to come and give them the opportunity to, to make their, their appeal, but, uh, from the standpoint of jurisdiction, um, what we can look at is the process and procedure which it was handled, but we cannot, it is not a decision that falls in our jurisdiction to say whether or not they can or cannot attend school in the district, because we have policy that states how that, that's, that's done. So, that's, that's outlined in policy, so, uh, but at this time, I'd like to recognize the Smiths, if they're in attendance tonight?
They're both in attendance, and they came hired me to represent them in this field proposition, so...
I'm sorry, it, um, I'm sorry, could you...
First of all, tonight, I'm the attorney.
Okay, um, you have five minutes.
Five minutes to talk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna start with the Mullins first, is that okay?
I'm sorry, are you representing, Bo?
Yeah, I represent Bo.
Okay, um, and you're, you're gonna do what?
I'm going to present this evidence, I guess, uh, their argument for their appeal.
Okay, you, in this situation, I think if you as an attorney, uh, on their behalf, um, I'm gonna ask that, uh, you not be recognized because we don't have our attorney here, and uh, thank you, I'd need to direct those appeals to our, our board's attorneys. If the Smiths or the Mullins were here, I'd be happy to give them the opportunity to present their case, but this is, uh, they, you're, you were not recognized, I was not notified that you would be representing them in this meeting, so we're not prepared. I'm not gonna ask my board members to, uh, put them in that situation, so, uh, I hope you respectfully understand my decision.
Yeah, well, I spoke with your attorney out of Chattanooga, right?
Yes, sir.
Your board's attorneys out of Chattanooga.
Yes.
I spoke to them earlier this week about these issues, so...
Well, then, then if you spoke to our...
Not here confrontational in any way.
I'm sorry, I understand that, but if you, if you spoke to our attorney, you, I was not notified that as board chair, so you need to continue to speak to our attorney, okay? But I'm not gonna allow you to speak to us in the board setting like that because you've already made contact with him, so you can take that to, uh, you can take that to our attorney, okay, and I appreciate that, I'd love to, then, give the Mullins and the Smiths opportunity to speak, but, well, let them speak, not a representative for them, okay? That was my understanding, that was what, the invitation that they were, they were given, so, thank you, thank you very much, okay?
Ms. Mullins, can you come up?
Yes.
Do you have them on the clock?
Uh, not yet, but I mean...
I'm Keely, or Keel Mullins, Keely's mother. I have some packets here of evidence that I have to present, that's okay?
Sure.
So, our daughter has been denied access to be on the basketball team due to our address meets the requirements to attend school in White County, but it does not meet the T double S double A guidelines to, for her to play basketball under the director's decision. So, the first thing on, in the packet is the T double S double A bona fide change of residence. And if you will look in there, I have the copy of our lease. I have a copy of our driver's license with our current address, our updated motor registration card. I have the utility hookups and our first set that came in. The recent utility deals with our, our addresses on there. The utility shut off from our previous residence and U S P S changed address from our previous residence. We did not do the last two because we own the property in Overton County and that is where our business is through and we have a farm there. My husband and I, before we even brought Keely down here to start the move process, we reached out to Lauren Jones at T double S double A, which is the director of eligibility, and she gave us a list of all the things that would, about the keeping our previous residence. So, as long as we can conduct business there and we can farm there, but we cannot reside there. And so, we have complied with all of those. And, and I, I brought Tom Clark here today to confirm our residency at our current location here in White County. We have spent over $29,000 in the remodel of the apartment that we are currently renting, and that is in your packet on the opposite side. Behind that, I have provided receipts, gas and food receipts to show that we have been here in Sparta, doing exactly as we said. We have done, we have been truthful and upfront and honest with everybody from the get-go. Additional information that we have is purchases that we, we did to, for the apartment. We have security video of us coming and going from the apartment and we have pictures of before and after. Our daughter went through a lot of mental anguish at the previous school and we hope to bring her to White County to start fresh and to heal. And up until the 24th, we were doing just that. And then we got a letter out of the blue, no communication prior to this, that she was being dismissed from school because we had a fake address and we, they had proof that we kept our, our previous residence. And we were fixing the residence at that time. And we met with Coach Dodgen, Mr. Wilson, and Coach Crane because Livingston Academy had called the schools and prior to them even receiving Keely's transfers from the guidance counselor, was already starting to cause a ruckus here. And then the next week, T double S double A called because they got a complaint from Livingston Academy saying that we had, there was a coach link that there was, our son was still enrolled at Livingston Academy, which he is not, and that she attended spring workouts with White County basketball team. And they used a picture with Jason Whittingham at, at his training sessions. And so, every bit of that complaint was debunked. And that is the only complaint, or the only time that we were notified that they talked to T double S double A.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Mullins?
And we are living here 100% of the time.
Okay.
And we have evidence and witnesses to prove that.
Okay. Appreciate hearing, hearing your, your story. Anybody from the Smith family represented here tonight? Okay. I'd yield forward to you. You're welcome to state your appeal. Okay. Mr. Cloud, I'm recognizing the, the Smiths. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on the clock.
Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Shawna. I am Lucas Smith's mother. This is his father, Joseph Bava Smith. Due to personal reasons, I moved here in May of 2023. And established a residence and sent my child to school here in July 2023, in, in which lived at the apartment and was called in for verification in October of 2023, Mr. Haley and Mr. Crane, in which I was at the Board of Education for five hours for that meeting. And two hours was with Mr. Crane and Mr. Haley, in which we went over some questions that they had for residency. So, I didn't know, I never had been to a meeting like that. In which, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Haley told me, we're good, we're fine, this is good, you don't have to worry about me anymore, this is fair and fun, Lucas can play basketball, in which he was put through in a, I would assume a T double S double A portal at the time to play his sophomore year here, in which he did. He sustained a knee injury in the spring and has kind of been out since then. But I also received an email on Saturday, August the 24th, dismissing my son from White County Schools, and in which subsequently we came in and met with Mr. Dornberger. He was kind enough to meet with us and, and then we met again on the 30th, in which he granted Lucas a hardship tuition in which I paid that day. Still got my address here in Sparta and his father lives in Putnam County. So, from that on, that was paid, but it was determined that day by Mr. Dornberger that he would not let him play basketball his junior year.
And T double S double A has not been involved. This is not a T double S double A issue.
Thus far, it's not been a T double S double A issue that I had known. But again, personal, we've been separated and this is hard to stand here in front of a bunch of strangers. But anyway, things are better, but really, in all of this, Lucas is the one that suffered. He was ripped out of school, nothing transferred, so he, if I had transferred him, he would have lost all of his dual enrollment, in which Mr. Dornberger did listen to that and he did not want that for him. And I think, you know, that's why he said, let's do an out of county thing, in which I did pay. But in that, he's worked so hard to come back from this ACL. And when you're a kid, you have big dreams and sometimes it looks kind of small to us in this room, but basketball's kind of his thing. And he's worked so hard and now that's been taken away, along with his teammates, his coaches, his support system. And it's been very hard on my son. It's been hard on me and his father to see this happen. And really, all we want him to do is go to school, be smart like these other children that were up here tonight, and live out his dream. And that's just to play some ball. And he's not even medically released yet to play basketball, but he can get it because that's what, you know, dreams are made of. Sometimes you gotta get over the humps too, and that's what I keep telling him. But I need your help with this. And I don't know anybody in here. But I ask that you please consider not taking this away from him. Because it's been, it's been a biggie emotionally, physically. It's hard for him to heal this knee when he's under so much stress. He's not sleeping. Sometimes when he does sleep, he doesn't want to wake up, you know? He wants to sleep and sleep and sleep because he's so distraught. And I know that's my timer and I really do appreciate your time.
She still has her residency here.
And I'm gonna have my residency.
In Sparta.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith and Mullins. So, since, board members, since both parties have come and they have come here to our meeting with, with council, one way we can handle this is if we ask Mr. Bennett if he would, he would come up, Scott Bennett, our board's attorney, and we could discuss this thing. You shouldn't have to discuss your, some of the challenges, say, we can talk, talk about this in, in, with council. You can have, bring yours, we'll have ours and can discuss your situation in, in, in that setting. But again, as, there is limits to what a board can do, what administration can do. And so, I hope you respect that, from that standpoint, okay? So, appreciate you coming and director will be getting back in touch with you or your representative about setting that up, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next step is, somebody's gonna get all the families and says something.
I think families probably should let our director know who they, who they, who they want to be, who they want him to contact, okay?
That'd be me.
Probably the attorney will contact you and let you know since you're speaking.
Yeah, that's fine. And then that would be, would you have a time frame for that?
I'll contact him tomorrow and then, and then it'll be on his time, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Leads us to the next item on our agenda, and that's public comment, her policy 1404. In state law, we have a, a signup sheet for members of the public to come and speak to the board regarding anything on our agenda or any other items that they might want to bring to the board. There's no one that signed up for our agenda tonight, so, to speak. So, moves into new business, we have no new business items, we have no old business items, so that leads us to chairman's comments. So, our next.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something before you get into your comments?
Sure.
Please, please.
Mr. McDonald.
I, I just wanted to, to let everybody know, make it publicly known that in November, you guys approve, you guys, the previous board approved my application for the T S B A officer position. And got word this past week that I was approved as the president of T S B A along with several others that are, are on that officer committee. So, in November, I will be installed as the T S B A president. First one from White County.
Congratulations.
Appreciate, appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity and, and having faith in me and, and this district backing me and supporting me in that. So, January 1 of 2025 through December the 31st of 2025, we will be, I will probably be asking for a lot of help from a, a lot of people in our district to, to get us through that. So, just wanted to, just wanted to pass that along officially.
Well, Mr. McDonald would say, congratulations to you and I, for members of the public, people that may not be closely connected with that, T S B A is their, our alternative to the national school board associate, national.
N S B, yeah, N S B.
N S, N S B V A. And it's our alternative to that, which I think more, aligns more with the values of the, the people in the state of Tennessee. And Mr. McDonald has been working as, and serving in T S B A at various officer capacities now for, I think, the, for three years or four?
I was upper county district director for three years and then I was the treasurer for one year and the vice president this current year, so.
Three years at the state level and three years at the local level, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So, so Mr. McDonald has put a lot of time into that and so, I think it's, I think it's just great that he's now having the opportunity to serve and lead that organization and represent White County. So, that's a really, that's a really good thing. So, bring more recognition to, to our district and all the hard work and, and, and good things that are going on here. So, thank you, Mr. McDonald for, for.
Thank you for that time.
For, for serving in, in that capacity. All right, so next, want to give you a reminder that our next board meeting will be October 10th at the White County Middle School. We will have our work session at 5:00 and our regular meeting at 6:00. I'd like board members to be reminded that we were gonna have a board member workshop that will be next Tuesday, on the 17th, at 6:00 P. M. at the Board of Edu- Education. So, all board members appreciate you attending and this will be a board member orientation workshop because we do have several new members and we want to get you up to speed as quickly as possible. So, that leads us to our last item on the agenda, and that is the tournament.
So, move.
Have a motion, turn in a second. All those in favor? All right, thank you for coming. You're tense.
No thing I would be able to be here. I'm at a neighbor's place with Monday. And I would have been here earlier, but they got the labs and I had here some. I was like, sorry.
I will, I knew you were, I knew you were gonna want something.
I think it'll go really well.
Oh, yeah?